So let's see, we've got a motion to approve Mr. Holder's participation via Zoom.
So moved.
Well, we need a verbal roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hattie?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Ms. Barber? Ms. Williams? Here, Chairman Rose.
You're approved, yeah, in favor. So, well, we just did that after I called it to order and now we've got roll calls next on the agenda. We'd have to do a roll call again.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hattie?
Here.
Mr. Holderide?
Hey Kenny.
Mr. Pierce?
Here.
Ms. Barber?
Yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Chairman Rose.
Present. Okay, so, let's see. Mr. Holderide would like to add an agenda, add it to the agenda. I've got a couple of things I'd like to, like to propose. Let's see. We had Kyle on the phone for four hours within the last meeting. We were waiting for him, he was just hanging around. And so what I'd like to do is propose that we move Kyle and Tracy Porter up and have them present first. And so that would reorder things. So 7A would become 7A, 7B would become 7D, 7C would become 7C, and 7D would become 7B. I'd like to add discussion about how we evaluate, prioritize things. And so there's a couple of extra sheets that were slip-sheathed today that I'd just like to talk about return on investment, how we prioritize things. And then we've got Ms. Williams was going to check on Tappahannock processing, a processing plant there and work with staff on farmer's market. Holderide was gonna do some work on internet and internet property search database. It's a mouthful, but if everybody followed that, I'd like the motion to modify the agenda accordingly.
I'm going to modify the agenda as stated by Mr. Rose.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay. First thing we've got to do is get through the minutes, air of approved minutes. And we've got April 13th minutes that we need to approve. That was the last time we were here together, Senator Diaz. And I don't have any modifications. I don't know whether anybody else has.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Pushing passes.
Still that thousand, Chris.
Yeah, we're cooking. All right, so let's see. Now we've got April 23 that we need to go through. I did have a couple of, a couple of comments on that. I'm glad to run through mine first. So there was, we did a, we did advantages, disadvantages from an economic development standpoint and listed them as one of the exercises that Mr. Ashcroft, Ashcroft had us do on Saturday. And one of the things that popped up that's not consistent was under like advantages. One of the things that was listed out was affluent residents per capita income. And that's in contravention to the over-leveraged and the lack of white collar workers and the disadvantages. And so I, I'd suggest the easiest thing to do is to stake it out rather than have a bunch of discussion going on per capita income. But that's, and then there was, on one of the pages, it said that I asked if the Fauke's Farmer's Market offers franchises. And I know that, I don't remember what I said, but I'm sure it wasn't franchises. And so maybe look back at tapes on that one. Let's see, were there, were there any other comments? What was your first comment? So what, if you, if you look on, I can show you. If you go to page 23, it listed, I'll say, listed strengths.
Okay, okay.
One of the strengths is we've listed out as affluent residents per capita, per capita income. And I was saying that's inconsistent with some of the challenges we have, which is 28% over-leverage households and a lack of white collar workers. And suggested that rather than have a bunch of dialogue around, around that particular issue, these are stated.
Just because it figures that really weren't in the, we had no statements come from that. But just discuss.
Well, I think we learned, if you go back, that one of the challenges we have is, is.
You just shouldn't want to put all that around, just make a statement leaving that, that's what you're saying.
The minutes just reflect what was said during the meeting.
Right.
It doesn't reflect anything else.
They did not reflect accuracy as far as whether the data is accurate, but it is information that is passed in the meeting.
Okay, if everybody's, okay, so we don't need to address that then, it's just that there's an inconsistency. And the only, the other comment I had was, it talked about, I asked the question that Fauke's farm, if the Fauke's Farmer's Market offered franchises, and that's not.
I'll go back and look at the tape, because that was what I wrote. So, but I'll go back and look at it. What page was that on?
Yeah, I, actually, I'm sorry, is page 28? So was it, so we've made one revision, is there, are there any other revisions?
Well, no revision to it yet. We can't vote on these minutes until she goes back and checks the tape.
Yeah.
So these minutes will hold over until the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so you're, all right. So we'll, I guess we push that to the next meeting. I was thinking that we could revise it subject to the revision, but we did that last time with Jean's comment. And Jean said, we've corrected.
Well, I just, my, I had me apps and I just want to show, President came in late.
Right, absolutely. Right, we made that revision and approved the minutes, so I guess.
Well, the question is, is whether or not the information was there. So if you ask, that's all, all I'm saying is if you ask for it, the tape needs to be checked.
Got it, got it, good point, okay. Let's see. Next on the agenda, we've got the treasurer's report.
Mr. Chairman, there is no change from the previous month. I will say that the board adopted the budget Monday night with the funding that would cover a possible extension of the contract for consultants.
Okay.
If the board chooses to, or the EDA chooses to go in that direction.
And we've got, that's on the agenda later on.
That's correct.
He's a person.
Got some questions, Chair?
Yes.
Have, have we paid for the services rendered today? Have we been billed and paid for that?
The only outstanding is the last voice for the final.
Okay. And we'll have plenty of time to get that in before June.
Yeah. Let's see, next on the agenda, we're done, everybody's. Okay, so next on the agenda is the chairman's report, and I'd like to have some discussion around ROI. I don't know whether that's, whether that belongs here or whether we deal with that as new business. What's, give some direction for me?
You could put that in the chairman's report.
Okay. All right, so there, there are three pages that were slip-sheathed. And I don't know that this is the right answer, I'm just, my goal was just to have some dialogue and, and propose something and maybe get some reactions and get it to a higher level. But the first page is, is return on investment, just a simple return on investment. And so what I'm, what I'm proposing is that as we're having these dialogues, one way to quickly filter some things and, and determine whether, whether there's, whether we, you know, where, where items are in the pecking order is to look at things from a return on investment. There are two ways to do it. One is like a return on sale, and the other is a, you know, recurring income on return on investment. And so I offer those up, somebody may have some better, better thoughts, but that's a pretty simple thing. It's easy for everybody to understand and follow. Yeah, I mean, at some point, I guess we get into discount capital and all those sorts of things, but that's, that's a different discussion. That's, we don't need to have that to filter things.
The question, Mr. Chairman, are we only going to look at tangible returns on investment or things that the EDA are looking into? Because this is a tangible, so.
So at some, at some point, if we're doing real estate testing, we'll get into discount capital analysis and we'll get, and we'll drill into things and we'll look at, I'm sure we'll have the dates of the weather expenses accelerate faster than income and all those sorts of things.
Well, those are still tangible.
That's a, that's, that's a, that's a different discussion, so, okay.
Those are still tangible. I'm looking at intangibles that may be for something that may be a community development. We, we put in an area that can be utilized for farmer's markets, which don't bring any money. As an example, Jay and most of you are aware, the, the investment to build a deck on area in West Point, what's that exit called? The.
The Pavilion?
The Pavilion, sorry, couldn't figure the term. The Pavilion that King William EDA agreed to invest in with that. That for us is a 100% intangible return on investment that you could mark.
I don't think that's true, forgive.
Maybe not 100%, but there are more, in my opinion, right now, there are more intangibles to it than tangible that we can see.
So I think, you know, strictly speaking, we improved the piece of land that the Pavilion is on.
Correct.
So there was a gain in the value of the real property. And so King William, insofar as we invested funds into that project, we own a portion of the gain. So we could point to a very real tangible return on investment, or the county owns a portion of that parcel. I think to your point, the goodwill generated by King William's investment in that property is very difficult to put a dollar value on. We could, we could assign a value to it for our own financial statements if we wanted to, at whatever value we would attach to that goodwill. But I don't think that, I mean, to the, I mean, I guess that, that investment was not ours. It, EDA's, it was the county's. But so I do think, just strictly speaking, on the, to understand ROI in that case, you would have to look at the improved value of the property after making the investment and figure out what portion of that is attributable to King William's investment. And we could say that there was a 2, 3, 4, 10, 12% ROI on that investment.
Okay, and agreed with that. I guess my question is more along the lines of, will, noting that, yes, we would, these are, for me, tangible is much easier to look at and evaluate for an ROI than the intangible. But at times, intangible is much greater than what the tangible may be. So I guess that's what I want to make sure of, is that we, and I don't know how we capture that. I think it would be different for each project.
Well, and that's why I think presenting it this way, where you can look at the annual return on investment from an income perspective versus, you know, the, the gain of the value of a piece of property, right? So you could, we could say that if the EDA finds a way to go out and acquire a piece of property.
Right.
And put something on it, right? We wouldn't necessarily see any income as a result. And a lot of people would say, see, you're not, you don't have any ROI. But that's not true, because if we acquire a piece of property and improve the piece of property, we at least have an increase of value that's attributed to our activity. So there is ROI there, it's just a matter of making sure that we are able to capture, is it, is it gain of value or is it income? And looking at it in both ways, I think, is really, really important. And the goodwill discussion is real, but, but we can value that however we want to on a project-by-project basis. I think what this has done is, is recognize the, I guess, two bases for, for evaluating the increase in an asset.
Right. I don't know, I'm not saying this is the answer.
No, no, no.
So you've got a better idea?
No, definitely not better. I'm just asking if, because there will be times when we need to look at, because we may come up on something that we show on here and it's flat. There, there's no return on investment, but the intangible portion of it, you know, we're able to host things at that facility now. And Jay brings up a good point, that you can then show increase of use in that property, which builds a value in that property. So maybe it's just a different way of looking at it. Maybe intangible is a bad term to utilize for looking at that. I just want to make sure that we look at not just an income-based review of what the, the asset brings as if we invest in something, because there's much, many more ways that we can look at something increasing in value than just simply the return on investment income-wise. That's all.
I could share with you how I got there. And so I reflected on our last, we talked about everything, from Christmas tree farms to internet websites. And there, there, there were no bad ideas, right? But I, I'm, what I'm proposing is at least an initial filter, which we can look at things to make decisions. Right now, we still got Christmas trees and internet that we're talking about. We're chasing farmer's markets. And so at some point, we need to actually prioritize things. And, and in my own mind, this was a simple way to get there and to refocus discussion and say, what are the benefits? And, and it may be that we end up saying, you know, branding is the most important thing and we can't put a number on it, but, but that's what we have to do. I think this, if we start here, we'll get there. But that's just one idea. If you've got a better idea, bring it on. I just, all I'm, my, my sole purpose in doing this was just to initiate discussion and see if some, you know, get us talking. So you're using this as a way to prioritize our priorities. Just which, a filter, which to look at things initially, you know, so. We, we, at some point, we're going to need to like put all these things up on the board and we're going to need to say, that's the one we're going after. And we've got to have some way to figure out what that priority is. And this, this, this is my suggestion, but I'm totally open to, I mean, I get smarter the more people I talk to, so.
Well, the, the returns with the hard numbers, they are what they are. There's no question about that. The intangibles sometimes can outweigh.
Absolutely.
And we should always include that in our analysis, but just be separate from the hard numbers.
But I think having, but if we start with, what are the, what is the return? Then it'll lead to, well, there's a potential that we need to look at.
Well, there always might be a return on anything, because the best thing, my opinion is, what is the best thing for King William County, county citizens? All right, just like you were saying, to listen to things down and down at one point. But you understand, in the wrong place, it's not being weird, because it's all the major drag and nobody gets to it. And if you go to the Pavilion and want to go to King and Queen, you might take your half hour to scroll down a section. There was no thought process of doing it, so on that side, because you can't utilize it. So my point is, we need to look at stuff, yes, that can help make county life great, but also we need to look at what is best moving on forward for the citizens.
Mr. Ashcroft, I wonder if you could help us, you, you've been doing this longer than anybody sitting up here, right? And, and so is there, how have you seen other, both prioritize things? And is there, I mean, can you offer some, some?
Well, I think, I think the work session that we had that Saturday helped us to develop a little bit of a strategy as to what we need to do. But I think we need to, we need to identify, how are we going to invest? Or talk about a return in investment, what are we going to invest in? Is it real estate? Is it waiting on a project to come in and then we partner? Maybe we, you know, we share in the investment of a, of a project that's coming into the county. That's another way that you could, you know, get a return on for investment. You know, those are two that come to mind right now that I think are real. I think getting, getting some property and, and choosing to market it for the benefit of the, of the authorities is certainly something that we're going to bring forward to you. We're wanting to do it tonight, we're still missing some state information and we're feeling sometimes operating out of the mercy of the state. But when we get into, when we get a project, and I'm going, I'm going to use Nestle as a perfect example. I don't know exactly how it all flows as to who was involved or who wasn't. But the bottom line is, the county invested, and Nestle invested, and now you have one of the most major projects in the state. So to me, I don't know how you calculate that in your formula, but you certainly created jobs, you created a greater tax base than you had before, and you still have the potential for even more development at that site looking forward. So to me, that is a recurrent in your, you know, the county investment. It might not be the EDA specific, but anything good in economic development is still tied to this group as far as I.
Okay, so how do we, how do we prioritize all the stuff we have? That's, that's, I mean, we've got.
Well, I just, I just think.
Internet?
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, you throw out a number of ideas. The majority of this, of the board has to decide, are those ideas worth pursuing? And it's not that they're bad ideas, but maybe they don't fit. As the vice chair has said, you know, you made a trip to Faukeer, you looked at that project. Is that something that would fit in King William? If it is, then you charge staff with doing your groundwork. A farmer's market, which is later on in the agenda. It's probably going to be a small, to get it started, a pilot, but if that's what we want to do, then we want a groundwork. A processing plant, if there's, if there's a lead there, we'll help you chase it down. We weren't aware of it. We know about processing plants, but I'm not aware of anybody who wants to necessarily make an investment here. So I'm just saying, it really takes what you feel like. You have the call of the community. You're, you're appointed because you best know what the community feels like from an economic development.
And this, this is Kenny. Good evening, everyone, I got my mic to work. But I knew, I mean, you're, you're discussing about, you know, like getting a win under our belts in 2022. And, you know, I, I think that, you know, maybe if we find projects, because I've seen some counties, I think it was Tappahannock, somebody was out actually going specifically after a certain business to bring to a county. Maybe that could be, you know, we say, hey, we want to bring a new restaurant to the county in 2022. More of something that's a franchise chain restaurant. I mean, I think that that's something potentially, I think we do have some sites that we could potentially get the ball rolling and specifically call out that we're going after that specific customer to the county. And I think Kyle, you know, when he does his thing, you know, we'll, we'll kind of know our target of what we should go after because the mathematical equations is right for that kind of business to participate in the county. So I think maybe after we hear RKG's final wrap-up, you know, we, I, I think you're 100, you're spot on with, you know, we need to put some wins and know what to go after.
I really appreciate, forgive me, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this as a, as I think one of two critical factors in evaluating whether or not to pursue or prioritize something. So I like to, forgive me, I created a visual where I like to think of a, of a box like this, where on the high side, you have something that is extremely well mission-aligned. And on the horizontal axis, you have some financial metric like ROI. So we can find things that may be very, very well-aligned with our mission and our purpose as an EDA that don't have a high ROI that we may still want to pursue because it's extremely well mission-aligned. But we may also find things that are, that are not mission-aligned, that have very, very low ROI that we may want to stay away from. And so I think it gives you a little bit of extra flexibility, I think, like my colleagues have mentioned, with things like goodwill and intangibles. But I think that's why it's really, really important, I think, to Kenny's point, that we hear from RKG. And I think we get, may take some more steps, like Mr. Ashcroft asked us to, as we were taking a look at the bylaws, to really get a, a solid understanding of, of what it is that we want to, to do here from an EDA perspective or from an economic investment perspective, because then the, the mix of ROI plus mission fit make a, make a lot more sense.
It's so, it's so like, so we would be looking for things that are in the top two boxes.
Top two boxes.
And, and so in, to, to evaluate the right-hand box, you'd end up having some, some investment metrics. And then the left-hand box would be more mission, branding, like this, which is intangible things. I think that is a phenomenal idea. And so, does everybody, is that work for everybody? We'll start to score them, put them, put them, put them on that, on that chart. And it doesn't need to be perfect, but at least it begins to have, in a dialogue about where things fit. And that does exactly what I was hoping, is that we actually begin to prioritize things, right? So we know, instead of just spraying all over the place, you know? So, all right, so that's great, okay. Jay, thank you, that was a phenomenal idea. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, did you also provide the, the list of the concepts under consideration?
There's three sheets, there are three sheets that we're getting ready to go through. And, and the second one was an example of a new B2C agriculture business, right? And I just, I mean, I just made this up, right? But I don't think it's crazy. And just where the, where the potential benefits, you know, that could come from getting a new farm started somewhere, or, you know, or. And so, I mean, there, there, there are four, four buckets that we could, we could contribute to with King William, right? I mean, if you got purchase or girl purchases a new delivery truck, there's personal property. So anyway, so that's just, just. It helped me think things through, and I don't know whether there are others. Again, this was, this was just a prompt discussion. I don't know whether anybody else's got any other ideas, thoughts, where, where.
Are the figures that you're showing, are you saying that this would be the, well, what I'm getting at those is, are we looking at those as possible investment lines that we would support? So we would contribute to the purchase of a new delivery truck or?
Okay. Maybe I was just, where I was trying to go with it is, we were talking about only, you know, to add business, you know, and opportunities. And I'm thinking, all right, so what does that really do, right? So, you know, we, we get somebody into an education center and set them up in a form, you know, I mean, it's possible that this, you know, the sample that we're looking at is, is a result, or, and that goes back to the intangible stuff we were talking about, right? So how do you go put a number on an education center? But if, 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 if this is the final result, well, we've done it, you know, or, you know. Again, I'm just trying, trying to prompt discussion.
I'm trying to, trying to get.
I'm trying to, trying to get my head around this. We got, you know, we, we looking for prospects and we get several. Now, we want to pursue all, all prospects. Yeah, right. But I mean, are we, are we trying to prioritize the three prospects? Which one would you go after? And the other two on the back burner or not? We're not doing that. We want to go after every possible lead which fits into Jay's matrix. Right. But I don't see us, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I'm trying, I don't see us putting one ahead of the other as a viable prospect. You know, we're going after them all, you know? We're prioritizing to what? See what's the best investment for the county.
This is the discussion that we're trying to have right now. Trying to sort this out so that when we really start talking about opportunities, we have the ability to say that moves up to the top.
So Jay, going with your, your diagram, can we add in something else too? Because looking at the next set of papers and what we've discussed before with like King William High School. Right now, the school year is over. They're getting ready to graduate and we're shutting down the school for the summer. So now is a time that we could work with staff in order to bring in a greenhouse that will then be ready for them to pick up on school day number one, beginning in the fall. Also, as was discussed with the last meeting that we had, the work session, most small farmers have already selected their farmer's markets that they're going to, and they have scheduled those out for the summer. They know where they're going to be, just like any other business. They know where they're tracking to and which ones are high importance for them to be at. So building up the research for that right now may be the best time to look at it as far as where would we put it? Given us a time to actually put that in place. But sitting here thinking of a business to bring in and to Kenny's point, we've looked at and we've been approached several times as the E D A. The board has been approached, country courier has been lambasted, back on citizens have cried for a pharmacy. They want a writing or Walgreens. We advertise for E D A members to join a board. Why don't we advertise as a county for a local owner operated pharmacist to come to this area?
There we go. This is exactly where, where we're going. So that needs to go in, and that needs to go into this matrix. And before we have a discussion about hypotheticals, let's figure out where that could go. What do we want?
Let's go back to the problem market. We talked about all different sounds, but that's the sound that we had that on the map. If we didn't have one, we already have one in the county. I don't know how many years, fifty might have, five years out there on how long, how long we play that.
It's longer than I think that sounds.
The pop boy is that we did something, you know, in 360. Oh, we will hurt one of our industries, we already had.
So, okay, so that is a great segue to this, to this.
Federal.
Absolutely.
Anywhere you put it, right here, I mean, this organization has been here. I have no, no idea how long, and I can't see us trying to do something, destroy something either.
Okay, um, so, um, is this, is this, is this, is this the whole?
In the other side is.
Of course, there were two things.
There's not too many, really only any dog's body left that ain't a specific crop.
So, okay, so.
There's the run farming.
So.
Yeah, but not a lot, a lot of, uh, to, you know.
Sure.
So, so, so step, the, the goal is to, is to get projects and opportunities to land on the matrix that Jay has, has provided. And the way we get there is having a discussion about the pros and cons. And it includes tangibles and intangibles. Tangible, we're trying to, intangible. So let's just take a, a greenhouse at, uh, at the King William High, right? And this is, this is, there, I'm sure there are things I missed. This is just me trying to, trying to start discussion and, and, and provide a sample that, that we can go and improve just like we did, you know, with Jay's matrix. And, and so what I did is I, I tried to sit down and think about the greenhouse, think about the pros and the cons. And then did the same for the farmer's market. And, um, you know, one of the things on here is need to position so it's not adverse to family's market, right? And so that should be one of the talking points if you look under comments. And there. And, and so, um, I'd, I'd like to have a discussion about the framework of which we have focused and targeted discussions about pros and cons, so we can then move stuff into the matrix that Jay. How do we do that? Is there a better way to do this?
So if we're looking at trying to gauge some of this stuff for the community, instead of us trying to figure out what our community is thinking, why don't we public with these items, push it out or as a survey? What do they want?
Okay, that's, okay. So we're, what, what I'm focused on is, is how we evaluate that, which was the.
Well, that's an evaluation factor, because if we're going after something that the community does not want, it, I'll give an example. If we're going after a drive in movie theater in King William County and the community does not want it, then we're kind of barking up the wrong tree, no matter really whether it's a great return on investment or not, because our core users within the county, the, the tax money that could be utilized to establish it, they don't want. So I'm just saying as one factor that's in there, we simply ask out of these things, you know, we've, we've sent out surveys before and asked all kinds of different things with parks and rec and everything else, what would be the, what would be your top priorities? If we sent these out, you know, what are the county's top priorities out of these? Do they see utility and going after any of these? And basically laying it out for them. Just as another factor, because then we've got, not only then you've got our attention on it, but you've got community buy-in on it also, which is sometimes the needed piece that we don't have when we go after things.
All right. Question. Uh, last night, Broad, that's, you're doing a very, and he made a presentation. I think he presented his presentation of a lot of stuff that he was presenting last night. What county minister? Well, yes, he had an excellent speech.
Yes, speaking.
And I mean, we need to kind of people that.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't geared towards economic development. It was geared towards county government generally.
And how he wrote the different stuff, recreation, everything else that he received the county, he told him. You know, to me, it was interesting that some of that stuff people were saying, I think he needs to help with because the home fields get too tall. He need more place for photography. You know, this is stuff that's for the future of the county. So this, I'm just saying, I thought he had an excellent speech last night, you know, of looking at the vision of the county, how he thinks like we need to start looking at and growing. Did you? Yeah.
First, he was just giving an overlay of what he sees us, where we should go. As far as, um, this, the direction this county should go in, what we should do to make everybody happy, hopefully.
And a good start is there's some of this, that some of what he was saying is you got father, mother, grandmother. We got generation of home people. I'm just saying, I think some of this we need to look at because it was outstandingly.
So, um, um, I'm trying to figure out how we, somehow the, the, this group has got to be able to sit down and have meaningful dialogue. It's focused and it actually advances every single meeting so that we actually achieve stuff. And we're just, that's, and, and, and I think opposing that a framework that, that forces us to have discussions, targeted discussions about specific things and moves it out of hypotheticals and, and gets us to a place where we can, we come in and we sit down and we're going to say, we're going to talk about, uh, King William greenhouses and pros and cons. And we just bang it out. It's a five minute discussion and then we move on to the next one. Bang it out. And, and, um, then that should lead us to a place where we can then look at tangibles and intangibles. Put it on the matrix. And then at the end of the day, we have this board, Mr. Ashcroft could help us, we put it up on the whiteboard. And then, and then, you know, it'll be obvious that we have these three opportunities are at the top. What do we want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I, I very much appreciate this pros and con diagram as a, as a starting point for, for discussion. I think the, it also occurs to me that trying to make sure that we have focus, set aside time to talk about the opportunities that are in front of us, right? So I think this is a terrific way to, to lay out. And I, you know, I've been a part of all these conversations, but if you'd asked me coming in here, like, do you have four separate opportunities to, to weigh out at a event like now? We don't have four things going on here, but it's very, very clear that we have four. And then, you know, further, we could, we could add more to that. So, um, I think it just goes to show us that as we kind of continue down the R K G path, learn what the, the study and the consultants have to tell us, there's going to be no shortage of opportunities for us to go after. What I think may be helpful is, you know, I think our regular business meetings where we're kind of reviewing new business, old business. Those agendas may get so full that a robust dialogue about, you know, the four or five or six things that we have going on, pros and cons, may not be helpful. But if we went back to a, to a cadence of meetings where we had our normal business meeting where we were hearing from R K G and from, uh, from, from, forgive me, I'm blanking on who else is on the agenda tonight. And then had off month work sessions where we set aside those work sessions to, to do the work of weighing pros and cons and mission fit and ROI of greenhouses at King William, of farmer's markets, of dedicated King William programmed educational facilities. And set aside those meetings to do nothing but dig into the, to weighing out, you know, should we pursue this or that? Then that would give us something actionable to come back to our, our regular meetings for. So, I mean, I think that this is tremendous. And I think maybe returning to a, you know, odd month work session, even month regular meeting, sort of cadence of meetings may actually give us the time to actually dig into things as we know.
It's, it's required because I, I think that even during our Saturday work session, I got frustrated that it felt like we were attempting to hit every bullet on the agenda, whether we talked about it or not. Just to simply say, we went through a four page agenda and then we were done. And for me, that's not a great use of time. Some of these things like Jay says, we may have times where greenhouse may take us one meeting completely just to discuss everything that needs to go into it, what we're going to do. All of those things have to have business plans associated with them and everything else. How are we going to lay this out? Whose responsibilities are everything? So going into, to that type of agenda where, like Jay said, and that's how we used to run is our work sessions did not follow and are not required to follow the normal agenda, um, process. So we can open it up for just that and hit one or two topics and be able to go through it. But I, this is a huge agenda even tonight. I mean, when you look at it, it's 54 pages and we've still got a, a 69 page report to go through.
So, so in, in my opinion, this is the most important discussion we have, because this is strategic in nature. This is, this is our strategy we're discussing. And what I know is that the people sitting here, there, there are some smart people here, right? And we're all coming from different perspectives. And if we can just figure out how to harness that and get it pointed and focused, we will crush it. But we've just got to get to a place where, where, and maybe, maybe the solution is we just have work sessions where the only thing we're talking about is strategy. These sorts of, right? And we're not having such a full agenda. Is it, can we do that?
Well, your bylaws, when we get to that portion of the agenda, I mean, your bylaws, you have to make an decision. The bylaws say you're only supposed to meet every other month and you have to be meeting every month. You could go ahead and amend the bylaws to meet every month, but establish the fact that one is a regular meeting, the other is a worker.
So, and we'll need to have some dialogue on that because there are also some, some, it, it gets, um, we, we, there's plenty of.
This is all well and good and, and, but are we getting the horse before the cart?
Yeah.
I mean, to me, we need to take R K G's analysis. Their recommendations, a way we should pursue economic development. And, and then try to lay the groundwork to, to get these people in. Then we go, we, we got some leads, then we try to prioritize.
Yes.
Uh, but we, we first got to get our, wow, act in order.
So, so, yeah, so what, what, what I'm, what I'm hoping we can do, and I think this is possible. Uh, um, like I was saying, we've got some smart people sitting here, is that it, um, the, the fastest way I know how to get from here to there is to move everything forward you can until you can't move it forward anymore. And so we're having a dialogue around our strategy and how we'll evaluate things. And at the same time, we got Kyle who's helping us and is going to bring some stuff back. And if we've got agreement in place on how we're going to look at things, then we're already set to go and evaluate the stuff as soon as it hits. And, 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 and so I, I, I think that we can cover more faster if we do things sequentially rather than in series. And I, I, I know we can do it. I mean, we got plenty of force out here. So, so, but everybody's going to be okay with it, you know? And, and, uh, so that's the part I need to make sure, like make sure everybody's okay with it. And, and, and it's, it's, it thinks right and it feels right, you know? It has to be both.
Right.
We should have separate, or we talk to R K G, just talk to different stuff. The one thing, the stuff, the stuff, we would, the government should be in the work. Not together and not all of us.
That's, that's, you know, sorry.
If you have it where R K G, uh, Tracy, for these people in our regular meeting, in the work session, we discuss greenhouse, playing it down the stuff. So when I have a conflict, we were here for one vote.
Thank you, Brandon.
And we can't do that till we change our model of whole new.
The bylaws right now state that you have one regular meeting that is required. You cannot skip those and then you have your work session.
Okay.
So that's right now. Historically, we, when Jane was the, the chairman, he ran it where we had one quarterly.
That's right.
And we didn't have any work sessions outside of that. Now, when we started having more activity with the E D A, we moved it to once every other month. Then we added in the work sessions. We also had working groups that were targeted on specific areas that were doing those things. So it doesn't all have to be accomplished with this body. It can be accomplished with smaller groups out of this body that are targeted on greenhouse, working with the high school, all of that.
But we, I'll, I'll tell you, we're doing a heck of a lot more now than we did years ago. We met quarterly and to be honest with you, I think we just met to be just meeting. And yeah, I remember asking the county attorney one time, you know, we need to get into some more economic development. He says, no, your duty is just to deal with the bonds, you know, when it comes to, you remember that?
True, that's why we don't have it anymore.
Well, well.
You're an economic development authority, you're not an industrial development authority. That, that definition was covering I D A, not an E D A.
Right, right. And that's what, what it, back then was I D A.
Yeah. We were first in and put it in place that's not.
I said, well, maybe he was right there.
Just to clarify.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The bylaws say that the regular meetings are five monthly. They don't say anything about work sessions, but I'm game for work sessions on the opposite side.
Well, and at one point, we, we discussed because of work sessions, if we put them on the calendar, then they're called meeting. So we would basically utilize the regular session to, at the end of that, whether or not we are meeting the next month for a work session or not, we could call it on or off at that point and still have time to do it.
It's, so, so I'm, um, I'm not burdened by what happened in the past that I went here. And, and what I'm focused on is what we want to do and do. I want to spend my time looking ahead, not the rear end there. And so whatever, whatever was done in the past, it was done in the past. Let's talk about what we want to be, how we want to be, how we want to do it. And I think that will be more helpful if we just unburden ourselves, um, you know, from, from that stuff. Um, and I, and I, I appreciate, I, I just, I thank you all for letting me try. I mean, I'm, I'm, I know I'm pushing and, uh, I've, um, and I, and I know that we're, we all want the same thing, that this county's awesome, right? And so we're all heading in the same direction, just, um, so if I'm pushing a little too hard, I, I guess I'm trying to say I'm sorry. Um, okay, so let's see. So what's next? Uh, that was the chairman's report. So I guess we need to summarize, don't we, Chris? So we've got a matrix, the Jay's matrix, right, the, the four quarters or quadrants, um, that we'll use as the goal to, to prioritize and to, and to assess risk and all those sorts of things, right? Return. And, and then we've got this, um, this spreadsheet, this concept, you know, under consideration where we did pros and cons? Is that, is that, can we gel on that idea that we, we'll sit down, we'll take an idea and we'll bang it out, pros and cons? And we have to spend a whole day on, on, you know, something, we'll, we'll spend it, but if we can move faster, a little bit faster. Is that, is that, so it worked for everybody?
Yeah.
All right. So Chris, let's, we just, um, that was good. We're good? Okay. Um, let's see, we got unfinished business and we, we reorganized, uh, where we prioritized things. So we've got seven A, um, which is phase one, the final report. And I'll confess, I haven't, I think, I got it today. I didn't have a chance, a chance to go through it. It's, um, but, Mr. Ashcroft, are you, are you good with it? Did, did you have a chance to, to look at it?
Yeah, we, we looked at it. I don't, uh, know that there's any surprises from what Kyle has presented all along, but I think he would just, you know, put into the, to the format in which it flows. Yeah, I mean, it's everything that he said he was going to deliver, I, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
My one, they were talking about the doctor's office with King William, saying we all had two. We actually have four at King William. You guys see me, Jess, DCU, King William, AID, Medical Care, uh, AID, Family Wellness, and one in West Point. So I think the county has five doctors on. And see, I was left out. And I think it's important. One other thing I read in it, I really, I got educated with how great they were saying our school was on First Quarter Live, they came back and said how lovely our school was back then, saying paragons. I think our school's outstanding, too, with, uh, our education, our advanced classes in King William, doing enrollment, uh, different classes, just like my son. He started college the first year, but he started, he was already in second year of college, he's already in college fourth year. And so, so just a little bit of stuff I've read and gone through, and I haven't really studied it for these sorts of things. I mean, so how much more information is incorrect?
Well, I, I haven't, I got it today and.
I've been reading it on my tablet, but it was publicized, it came out. And I haven't finished over it completely. And these are just some of the stuff for the first couple of things I've read.
So we ought to, we ought to just, we ought to gather it with the comments and, 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 and Kyle will address it. I mean, it just seems pretty simple to me.
Well, maybe we can do that the next meeting, because I know we have other stuff that I get to answer with. These are just some of the care of I think.
Yeah, okay, okay. So, um, um, so how, how, how do we want to, we want to send corrections, um, to Chris? Is that, is that how we should, would address this?
So can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is RKG on tap according to their contract to take corrections based off this report?
Don't take corrections.
Well, what I'm saying is.
Yes.
Okay. Cause I had asked Chris also if, because this is a very large report and I expected that, of course, we would read through it, I've read through a portion of it, haven't had time to read through all of it, but are we getting a brief or are we just gonna go through this? I don't understand how it's being briefed to the EDA.
Well, so this started with, I just asked Mr., I, I got it today, I haven't looked at it. I asked Mr. Ashcroft if he was reasonably satisfied with it. He said, he said, okay. Now, there, there are some corrections that, that we need to have addressed. Okay, so let's, what, and my question was before we get into it, you know, how do, how do we wanna, when Charlie pointed out a couple? And so we need to make sure they're addressed and get them incorporated. My question was, do we send them to, do we send our comments to Chris and have him compile them and then send them to, uh, to Kyle?
That's funny, that's funny.
It's pretty easy, right?
Yeah.
I would just have served that block before we got in.
Oh, there, I mean, again, the vice chair is correct. And again, we're talking like Kyle's not here, he's in the room, he wrote, he, he wrote, he wrote the statement, you know, there's different definitions of doctor's offices and I don't know what, you know, is there clinics, is there offices? How did he get to that number? Maybe he skipped something or maybe, uh, maybe he had a better, different definition. I don't know that anybody's right or wrong, it's just, these are things that should be brought up.
Yeah, well, so, yeah.
And that, and that's why HW should read the report from cover to cover, uh, look at it for not just factual information, but philosophical information.
Excellent.
Because you may have a different approach that, that he did in his, uh, in his discovery that we need to, to talk about. So I wouldn't approve this tonight, I would read it. I, you know, I would, I would accept it tonight as being submitted and then you're, at your next meeting or work session, whenever that's going to be.
We send the comments to Chris.
Yeah. Then, then, uh, those would, those would all come back to everyone. Then would be given to Kyle, he'll have a chance to, to, uh, talk about those and then hopefully to the satisfaction of the board, at some point you approve the document.
So I'll just tell you, you guys, um, um, my wife reminded me last night when I forgot to take the draft out, that I wasn't perfect. And, and, uh, so, um, anyway, I, I think we all make mistakes.
What, um, what do we, we got a draft a few days back, right? May 5th?
Yeah.
So what, this is the same, this is the same one. That's what I thought, yeah. We just, we just ran it off and give it to you, because this was sent to everyone.
Yeah, I got this, like, May 5th.
Yeah, but, but we just ran it off.
That's what we're, that's what we're dealing with.
It was, it was in our email.
Came through on the email from you.
But that's what I was asking, that said. The way that, I just wanted to be clear on what we expected from this tonight, like our review process.
Kyle's gonna tell us what, he's, he's gonna talk to us about this and, and I'm sure he's, one of his questions would be, you know, correction going up, right?
Well, for me, I would prefer to have a review of the document, make corrections, submit the corrections or submit comments to clarify what is in here so that Kyle can address that and then he briefs us on it.
Well, that's not what's set up tonight. We've got, he's here and, and so he's, we're set on, he's prepared to give us a brief and we can invite him back and, uh, I mean.
I have a brief with, because what's you going over it, when I have time for it and there will be other time for it, why should we have a brief until we get all comments after?
Okay. Well, let's see, let's see what we'll do. You want to make, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at that.
All right, I'm trying to understand now. Well, go ahead with the motion, we have a discussion.
Well, so they're gonna give us an opportunity, read over this so we can look at it, because he and I have our opportunity. And this thing that he will need to read, because I am in the service.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
And postpone his going over it and the next meeting, we're gonna bring up our questions and all, and rest it to him. He can come back, look over, go over the things, then the following meeting, come back.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of, point of order. I think there's a, there's a motion on the table, so the appropriate next step is to see if there's a second.
Thank you.
Second, second. Hold the favor.
Call for discussion.
Go. Thank you.
All right, so we, we are going to make comments to this draft, this, and then send them to Chris, I mean, to Kyle, to Chris. Chris sends them to Kyle and then we come back and he's gonna address them and then we come back in the next meeting and look at the whole picture without Kyle.
So what I would recommend, and this is how industry normally handles it, because I'm going through a report right now. I send it to my customer, they review, they provide comment and feedback back on that report. Most of it is going to be, they're going, just things that they want clarification on, more expounding on a certain position or something. That then comes back to me, I review, update that document and then send that finalized document to them for them to review and say, yep, that's good to go. And then we have a brief on it. I don't think that it'll take two more meetings for us to go through it. I think that what my next question was gonna be is, when do we need to have comments in? And I would think a week would be long enough to have comments into Chris. Those are compiled, sent to Kyle. Kyle adjudicates those comments within the document and then updates document. And in our next session, he's able to brief the final, he sends out the updated document, we look at it, review that final document, and then we go forward and he briefs us off that final document. My only concern with where we are now is that I don't want Kyle to brief something that Charlie has found issue with because it'll just lead us down a whole discussion as to why there's a, a problem with that.
That's basically what I said, right? I mean, I thought, we, comments, Kyle will address them, we come to them and then he'll send us that report before our next meeting and then we'll discuss, right? At our next meeting.
That's, that's, that's a discussion point. Does anybody else have comments? And then we'll try to close this thing off.
Do we have, do we have reason to believe that, like, the summary that he's going to give us today is gonna be substantially different with some comments?
We don't have.
Right. So I don't know that there's a problem with it being someone, uh, for, just to orient us so that when we go to read it, I just have a context.
May I, may I step in here just for a moment? This is Kyle, by the way.
Sure, absolutely, Kyle.
Can you hear me? Oh, okay. I, I, I don't have, so, so for, for my perspective, I don't have an issue if the board wants to take a look at the document before we have a more substantive conversation. I think the last point is probably accurate where the changes aren't going to be, well, let's hope they're not going to be substantial. But to that point is, if the group feels more comfortable having time to take a look at the document, give some comment, uh, and then I can address those comments and then we can come back and then everyone can be in a better position for the discussion, that is not a problem for me. And so to try and make it as easy on you all as possible, I think I'd be, I'd be fine with that, particularly given the fact if we are going to move forward to phase two, we're gonna get into additional conversations beyond just what's in the phase one document as we move forward. And so we'll be able to make sure that any happy to glad changes, any clarifications that you need based on the data that I collected versus the information that you know, we can continue to make those adjustments. Because remember, this is just a phase one document, the, the strategic plan recommendations, what you guys.
Hey, Kyle, we lost it for a second. Turn your mic on.
Sorry, yeah, I got kicked out for a moment, I apologize about that. Of course, the only time that I have disruptions is when I'm trying to say something, right? But, uh, so at any rate, you know, as I, and I apologize where you lost me, but, um, you know, I'm happy to take a, take a step back, let everybody have a chance to review it, give comment back, I can make the adjustments and then we can go through it to make sure everybody feels comfortable where we are. Because in phase two is we're really gonna start digging into that strategic recommendations and actions where you started the conversation earlier today around, you know, how do we prioritize projects? What are the, what are the factors that we want to look at? You know, where do we want to put our investments first, second and third? And so we have time to continue to go through this because this is only the phase one part. I think the part that you're all gonna be much more excited about and interested in is the phase two where we start to dig into specific action items and prioritizing those action items based on our available resources.
Mr. Chairman, my only comment related to the, to the motion that's on the table is that it's my belief that an overview specifically of the target industry, starting on page 13 and continuing to page 18, uh, is probably the meat of the report that we've not yet heard directly from Kyle. And any comment that I would have about the veracity of any of the claims that are made here would only be aided by a general orientation to the content by its author. So I would have a tendency to think that we should honor Mr. Tolyte's time, allow him to just run through the report rather than, um, you know, get too caught up in some small observations.
Are there any other comments on the motion? One second. Okay. Um, just gonna say the fact that I haven't read this should have no bearing on Kyle's presentation. And whether or not I'm, I'm, I'm qualified to sit and listen, so, um, you know, I'm grateful to Chris that she sent this thing around again today. I just, I missed it when it came out, so, um, let's, let's, uh, let's take this, um, Jay, what do we do?
So you, the motion again, so we're clear on what the motion.
So the motion is to, as I understand it, the motion that's on the table and has been properly seconded is to delay the presentation until we have had the opportunity to provide comment.
There it is. All right, so hold the favor. Hi.
I was late.
Hi. Hold the post.
Hi.
Hi.
There it is. Kyle? Which way to go? Yeah, so, um, so Kyle, Kyle, why don't you, why don't you walk us through what you got?
Okay, I'm happy to. So I appreciate the time this evening, um, to be respectful of everyone's time, especially since the question was around the target industry clusters that were in the back. I'll give you a kind of overview of the beginning part of the document and then we can get kind of into that meat of the conversation. And so the first, the first part of the report really is around all the data analysis that we did to try and understand what the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats were for King William County relative to trying to attract businesses to the community. So that was one of the, the primary asks that the EDA had of us when we first got under contract, which is what types of businesses should we be trying to bring to the county? And so we went through a number of quality of life issues. We went through, uh, local and regional employment in, information, looking at where existing clusters are, both within the county and within the region, uh, and try to distill all that information into if RKG was to be in charge of investing King William's money and investing its time in trying to pursue companies that we think would have the greatest interest of being there, these are the clusters that we think would most want to do business in King William County. And so there's a number of reasons for that. Obviously, our location, just to kind of give you a, a synopsis of that, our location is, is very advantageous. We are kind of wedged in between three primary markets, Hampton Roads, the Richmond Market and the Washington DC market. And so our ability to serve all three is, is fairly high. It's trying to take advantage of the existing land and physical assets that we have. We had to be respectful of, um, the, for example, the labor force that we have available to provide to employers and, and what that looks like. I know you had, when I sat in on that Saturday meeting, there was quite. I know you had, when I sat in on that Saturday meeting, there was quite a conversation around the quality of the labor force and the size of labor force. And I will say, the size is probably one of the most prominent issues that we have, is just, we just don't have a lot of people. And so we kind of distilled all that information and brought back to you what we think were the clusters that if you are going to actively pursue companies to come and, and try and do business in King William, these are the sectors that we would go after. And, and they're not listed in any particular order in the report, uh, and they're not listed in any particular order here in my notes. So I'm just kind of go, go through them one by one. So the first I have here is transportation warehouse, which is every from distribution of goods and fulfillment centers to cold storage facilities, to the logistics that is needed to coordinate transportation. Uh, and you know, you have to have a center, for example, where you, uh, coordinate your different delivery trucks to be out on the road to make sure that everybody's doing their thing and hitting their delivery points on time. And so the transportation warehousing cluster is one we think that could be very successful in King William. And it's, a, a lot of it is around, first reason I talked about.
Oh, Kyle, we lost you. Kyle, there you go, we lost you again.
And so, sorry about that. And so, um, you know, I, I want to be very clear, particularly on this one, when we talk about scale, because I think that's gonna be important part of the conversation as we move forward, is when we talk about transportation, we're, we're not talking about a million, a million and a half square foot distribution center for Walmart. That is not something that I think is going to be very attracted to King William County. And that's predominantly because, oh, we are connected to these three markets, we're not right on an interstate. And so those types of businesses require on and off capacity to be able to move goods efficiently. But what I am talking about is local and regional suppliers, distributors, um, businesses that are working in Hampton Roads, are working in Richmond, that this kind of strong mid-Atlantic market would have an interest in being part of your community. The second area that we talk about is around agricultural and forestry. And obviously you already have, this is probably your biggest cluster that you already have here in King William County, between West Rock and the lumberyard. And, but there are opportunities not just to protect and grow that sector, but to build upon it. So everything from a production side, which would be like, oh, looking at woodworking artisans, how do we have people take advantage of this resource that we have already here in the community to do things to create industry, create tourism, bring people to the community? Um, we talk about, you've already talked about the, the greenhouse with the high school that fits right very well within this sector, particularly around like an agribusiness incubator. How do we teach people how to become farmers? How do we teach people how to grow organically, for example? And so that that can be part of our economic development, particularly as the county seeks to preserve its very strong agriculture sector that it already has. But then there's also the agritourism component, which is not just trying to create products that you sell out, but create environments where you bring people in. And so we already have access, you, you guys mentioned this the last Saturday around having the rivers and having river access and the benefit that that brings and the types of, um, cluster that you already have around tourism. How do we continue to grow that? And so everything from things like distilleries, breweries and wineries to pick your own. Um, you talked about the Christmas tree farm idea already, you know, how do we create additional potential for like retreats or a venue that is right on the river, like a wedding venue, for example? And if we have them, how do we help market and strengthen them and build awareness, not just here within King William? But I can tell you firsthand, people will travel further than this to be able to have a destination venue for a wedding or a destination venue for a, a family reunion. And so between the production-based agriculture and forestry and the agritourism piece, I think there's an, an opportunity there. Uh, the third area is industrial manufacturing, production. But I want to be very, very clear, when I talk about that, we're not talking about like large smokestack or, or, or large scale. We're talking about maker space, we're talking about, um, artisans, we're talking about the small-scale manufacturers that are supporting maybe some of the bigger operations that are already in either Hampton Roads or Richmond or in the greater DC marketplace, businesses that are located along I-95, for example. Is how do we create those venues where those businesses want to be close by, but they don't necessarily want to pay the cost of trying to be right on 95 or right on 64? And so there's opportunities to bring in those small, mid-small scale types of businesses. When I say that, I'm talking about like 5,000 square foot, 15,000 square foot, 25,000 square foot users. I think that is where, based on the analysis we did, that's where the sweet spot for this county is going to be. The desire to go after a 200,000 square foot manufacturer that employs 600 people, you know, I, I don't know if that is where I would put my resources if I were the county, just because we, we already don't have a facility that does that. Um, we definitely don't have the, the labor force to be able to support that immediately. And I think that there are other areas, not just regionally, but nationally, that are gonna be more competitive in that regard. And so it's not to say that a 500 person, 200,000 square foot business wouldn't want to be here. It's saying that if you're trying to invest your money, where would I put that money? Where would I prioritize based on that matrix that you were talking about earlier, need, um, in, in our resources? Um, the next is around, um, taking advantage of some of these other natural resources that you have is around research labs. You have the Fuller Earth, you have local minerals, um, you have wetlands, you have the opportunity to try and work with entities like Virginia Tech's, um, Co-op or other, uh, statewide or regional players to say, hey, we have these resources here. How do we attract or how do we get you to make some investments here to take advantage of what we have? This one is a little bit more speculative than the other ones we've already talked about, but it's definitely something that if you are interested in, you'd be able to pursue. And it's taking advantage of existing natural resources that you have. Obviously, healthcare and social assistance, uh, is a tremendous one. Um, you, you'll have a notable population and it's growing, uh, and particularly you're, you're seeing substantial growth in folks that are 55 and older. That is not unique to your community, that is the baby boomer generation, which makes up a disproportionate share of our society getting older. And at, but the reality is, within the healthcare industry, the older you get, generally the more medical services you demand. And so there are opportunities to draw upon that. Now, I don't believe we have the strength to draw a, a, a freestanding hospital, but there are ways to partner with existing hospitals for either urgent care facilities or trying to bring in more of those types of, um, medical and healthcare practitioners to our community to take advantage of the existing demand that you have within your community and the demand that's growing. I will say, within the healthcare and social assistance, which is not really medicine-based, but is probably gonna be of high demand within your community, is childcare services and daycare services. A large portion of your population commutes out from King Liam County for work. Uh, they, they go to Hampton Roads, they go to Richmond, they go on, uh, um, west and north to, to DC market. And so providing the services so that folks can be able to live here and then have their care for their children, particularly the pre, pre-school age children, is a potential business opportunity. Because those folks are already coming here and they already exist here. And so that could be a business opportunity that the EDA considers to either help attract or help stand up as, uh, as a way to both create jobs and also help folks that are employed that are already in the county. And then finally, is around what we call or deem entertainment recreation, which is really around the additional tourism. I talked about access to the water. I know you had a long conversation, uh, that Saturday meeting around, well, is it a marina? Is it portage for kayaks and canoes? And we think that there's an opportunity, I agree by the way with the comments from that previous meeting, maybe it's not a heavy marina, but maybe it's growing and building upon existing opportunities. A portage company, for example, where you put in at one end and then you come out the other end and then we bring you back to your car. Trying to build upon and create conveniences and clusters around those entertainment and recreation businesses so that you can, what's called extend the stay. So the idea is not to have Kyle come down from Alexandria, go canoeing with his children, get back to his car at six o'clock and then drive home again. The idea is to create a, a concentration of venues where I come down and we do kayaking one day and then we do archery the next day and then we do something else the day after that. That's really where, quote unquote, the money is, if you will, from a tourism perspective. So how do we build upon what we have? How do we make what we have more aware? And how do we then attract additional users through investment so that we can create that length of stay? And this, by the way, ties very nicely into that agribusiness conversation we had earlier around things like pick your own, around the distilleries, the breweries, the wineries concept. Um, because I can tell you firsthand, uh, if you have a cluster of, of those venues, you are, you can draw a substantial tourism base of folks who want to do that, either a one-day, two-day or three-day venue. So that is kind of the nickel tour, if you will, of those pages that you identified. Um, and where we see from, if the county is going to proactively invest money and proactively invest staff, where we think you're gonna have the greatest chance for success. Now, I will say, when your staff is your county administration and a volunteer board, then you're going to have to prioritize. It's, it's, these are all, we believe viable opportunities, but the reality is, you don't have the capacity right now to pursue all of them. And so part of the conversation we'll have through phase two is, well, if we had to pick one or two, which of these one or two would you pick and why? And to kind of piggyback on that earlier conversation that I was listening to is, this is where that prioritization to turning, well, is job creation most important to us? Is it tax-based that's most important to us? Is it creating better quality of life for our residents that most important to us? Because as we have that conversation through this effort, then we're gonna be able to then start identifying, well, this one kind of bubbles to the surface because it has a better, uh, and, and I'm gonna pick on, on the healthcare issue, that's more about serving the population that we have and that's coming, not necessarily trying to attract investment from the outside. And if that's what our priority is, is quality of life for our, our residents, then let's focus on how we do that. And then that's a different set of target industries than saying, we want to create jobs that provide healthcare benefits and have a pension plan, which is a different set of priorities of what we go after. So that's kind of the, the nickel tour of that part of the document. Um, I will say, and I, and I want to address this because we've been talking about this a couple of times, the conversation around retail, there's a whole section in the document that talks about retail. If you go into the appendix and look in the PowerPoint presentation, we, um, get into a very detailed discussion around retail. And so I want to make sure, if that is what becomes the priority of the county, is trying to bring that pharmacy into the community, then let's talk about what that's going to take, which is a lot more people, okay? So I think I, I use that as a microcosm of the example of the conversation that we need to have, which is what are our priorities? What are the things we are willing to accommodate to attract the types of companies, the types of businesses, the types of jobs that we want to get? So that's, that's kind of the nickel tour of that section and, and I'm, I'm very excited. And, and I will tell you, I, there's no concern on my part about delaying a little more substantive conversation or detailed conversation. I am much more excited about clients that are engaged, that actually, that, that want to be in that conversation than kind of just going through the motion. So, um, I'm happy to have whatever conversation now, but I'm also very excited about when we have the chance, after you had a chance to digest all of this a little bit more, to get into it a little bit more in the weeds.
Nice, thank you for being so gracious, uh, in, in your, um, interest in receiving comments. It's, it's appreciated. It, is there, do you want to have any discussion about this? I mean, is there inputs, comments? Um, Kyle, thank you. We'll, we'll compile comments we have, we'll get them to Chris, Chris will get them to you. Uh, we'll figure out, uh, internal date of which we want to get those to you and we'll get them to you in the next time that you, you're able to respond. Um, before we're
Absolutely, and, and need, um, please let me know when you want to have that conversation, whether it's at a, a scheduled meeting or if you want to do a separate scheduled meeting, I'll make sure I get it on my calendar.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Um, next on the agenda, uh, we move, uh, um, Tracy Porter up. Is, is Tracy worth us?
No.
No? Okay, that makes it easy. One less thing to do. Um, so let's see. So, um, now, uh, we got the farmer's market update. Mr. Ashbrook.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at, uh, at our meeting, our work section, it was, uh, we were charged to do some investigating regarding the farmer's market. What I've been able to, uh, identify so far is that the high school parking lot is open to a farmer's market, uh, opportunity. Uh, and I believe you were looking at the hours of afternoon, mid-afternoon, early evening, somewhere around there. The last three Fridays in July were options that I thought the board might want to consider for your pilot, not to do all three, but to pick one of those three. And, uh, we have to fill out a, a use permit and give it to the school, uh, for its approval. But that's pretty much formality. It just lists all the things that we're gonna be doing there and, you know, all the good safety and security, it's just a number of different things that are involved in that. So that's kind of where we are. It goes back to what I said earlier. If the establishment of that market is something that you want to do, even if it's as a pilot, need to turn us loose and, uh, we were to work with Ms. Williams to identify, uh, possible vendors, uh, possible activity that would be there. Our, I think, is, we need to figure that out and then I've also, uh, asked the extension office if they would become a partner. I think they're very, you know, they're obviously, that, that's the nature of their business as well. So, we'll be, we'll be with those folks. But, but, once we get definitive direction from you, then we'll, we'll begin the task.
So there are a couple of things, um, relative to this, right? So we've got, uh, insurance, we've got coordination, staging, right, there, there's some details that we, we need to figure out or delegate. Um, and then, and then, um, we may need, as, as we think this through, we may need to get insurance from the people who are gonna participate in business licenses and that, you know, I, I don't know where all this goes, no?
No, I have to do other one of those.
Okay.
The school, the school's, uh, insurance would cover, pay any injuries. And business license for something like this would not, would not be necessary.
Okay. Um, this time, there, there, there was, there was something in here in the packet about getting insurance and personal insurance.
I mean, I can check again, but I just, you know, speaking from my own experiences, uh, whatever government entity is having something on its property, it's insurance coverage.
Yeah, so, so there was this, the King William Public Schools facility use and applicant, use, use application, it's, it, it, it does talk about additional insurance. So maybe because it's a county, instead of a, in, a, a private, right, maybe that gets us, yeah.
As far as the business licenses, I would expect a vendor probably has, has a license anyway. It's not, we can check for the commission of revenue to see if that's a requirement. I don't know that it is.
Possibly not. So, at least from my interpretation, when we got our business license, a farmer only needed a business license if they were selling products other than what they grew or so, uh, it's possible that they don't. But most farmer's markets, and some new ones don't. So you can't, it requires from us, uh, looking for does. And the same thing for certificate insurance. It really depends on the county and whether
I could have further details if it were, is there any new state requirements or? That's the only
That is also, that's also dependent on the market. So Wilhensburg requires that everything we're certified to generate an inspected authority. Whereas other markets specifically want to bring in their, their tiny small cottage
Right.
That have state cottage to purchase. So it always
Is there any way to pull the agreements that other counties have with a vendor to see what that language looks like? So we have a starting point.
So I'm sure Wilhensburg is, we have to share that, probably has as well. And so that was part of what I was gonna work with.
Okay.
To, um, kind of identify what kind of framework we want to have.
This makes me smile. I, I tell you, that's smart people here, right? So we, so we've got these subject matter experts up, we just need to listen to them, right, like that. Okay, um, so what do we do with this?
I mean, I, I think that, uh, I mean, the next step, I guess in my mind would be to say, if we were to proceed, this would be a target date, I think, as Mr. Ashbrook suggested. And then we could take next steps to just try to, you know, figure out whether or not we would have vendors who would even be interested in, in participating in such a thing. And it seems to me like there would be a, a series of steps that, you know, if we meet this threshold, that we would go to the next step. So if we can get vendors to come, then we would say, okay, how do we, you know, get the So if we get vendors to come, then we would say, okay, how do we, you know, get the word out? And how do we have initial conversations with Tommy's Produce? And, you know, those sorts of things to make sure that we're not stepping on toes. But I mean, I think that the the idea is a great one to try to put a spotlight on especially King William County growers insofar as they exist. And I know that there may be some disagreement about that, but I don't know, it just seems like a terrific opportunity to to really shine a light on some things that are already happening in the county.
So, okay.
I guess the other, the other thing, do you want to charge?
I think we want people.
But the pilot.
I think we're just want people.
I would rather have participation.
I think it was good question.
People in that area going to businesses that are in that area after the fact. I think that opens up an opportunity. Plus, I mean, personally, I agree, we need to talk to Tommy's Produce about it. But if he's open seven days a week and we are talking about doing this once on a weekend for that timeframe, I'd say we invite him to.
It's she.
She, sorry, to to that, you know, event as a community event, not that one necessarily look at it as something that would draw attention away from their business itself on that weekend.
I think when we were talking originally, but by somebody, they brought up doing it on Friday evening, making it more of a family function where we have food trucks in advance. So I think if you reach out to them and say, you know, this is an opportunity, like you said, that they can kind of have a place. But also kind of stress that you're going to be inviting vendors. They also do like woodwork or things like that, not just necessarily their direct competition.
So Jay gave us great advice, right? Let's let's think about it in concentric rings. Let's take the next step. Let's see if vendors, if we can track folks. And then then if we meet that threshold, then we take the next logical step. The challenge is going to be that we're not going to, we're meeting for so far. Right? So I think I think if we're going to actually do this, we're going to have to like delegate. And and that's another issue, right? The bylaws that that we're proposing, so we can't delegate staff. But but last weekend, we were talking about to delegate. Right? And we we'll get to that one.
We are your, we are your support. We always will be.
Yeah.
I think that's where we go. I mean, I think if the board is comfortable, then then I I would be perfectly happy making, you know, I mean, you said that Mr. Ashcraft, that the 15th, 22nd, 29th were all open.
Yeah.
22nd is better for me than the 29th. So, I mean, I think if there's no issue with kind of making July 22nd our target date, just empowering, you know, our our friends at the county under the under the the deep supervision of our colleague to kind of take the next steps and work until it can't be worked anymore.
There's a Little League and all the other perspectives you could go on.
Little League ends, the All-Stars start the first week of June, or sorry, they start, there are two weeks of practice the first week of June. So all the All-Star tournaments are the 17th. And then, of course, if they advance, then they go beyond that. But the first round of All-Stars on the 17th of June. They should be well done before July.
Well, that's what I was asking. I was wondering about the other stuff going on in the county.
So so, you know, this this will be, this will be my recommendation is that we we we're not going to be there to make decisions, but we can outline a process. And if you hit a green light at every step in the process, we're with you and we just go, right? So the first step, and if we just like, let's think this through. So the first step is vendors and getting us, having having staff do a survey and and find out if we can get sufficient people there. And and I think that would be step one, right? We get green light there, then we keep going. And the next step will be to to actually think through the the details related to the how how this will come together. So we've got interest from 10 people. How are we going to stage it? Where do they go? Where is it signage? All those, right? Jake will help me here.
I do think that the cost is something to really think about. I mean, I know if I put $5 down, I'm more likely to show up to something than if I just say, yeah.
That's a really good question. So, you know, and that makes me think that maybe we are thinking about like, if we do a band or music or something. So it's more than just a, right? It's not, really try to try to activate it, you know, give people a reason to go.
All right, question. Do you know Friday night at the high school at each church? That's still going on? Is it still going on?
I don't think so.
I was not, I was not told of that.
I didn't know.
I don't think they've done it since COVID.
I would just, you know, but I know before I've been to it more than once, I was a whole park on that floor and take off.
Well, once, once.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if it still existed. I just came to it one day.
I don't think we would want them in the same, because the area where they would they'll probably set up the farmer's market. I don't know that you'd want to have empty cars in there because you'd have such a mix of people either they are.
Right? Yeah. Right? They just take it stage and shoot.
I didn't know if they were still going. That's why I asked.
I don't believe they are.
But what do you do? Do you think, what is what is this this group's reaction to the thought of like trying to get a band or a or some play music or something other than than just just just.
Well, it's really a hospital. Yeah, but see her sort of work with them. And then we figure out how successful they can be, then we can look at the other options we want to go with. Find out first where we can carry away. Well, no, that's leading to. Yeah, but that's still a long way from it. I'm just saying, if everything works good and she has people coming, then we know we're already in the right direction.
Well, the other thing too, I I would tend to agree with that. If we've got 50 vendors, then I might not want to add any other complexity to it simply because that's a lot to take on, but this is our first time doing it.
So if this is, this is where we outline the process. So if we get 50 vendors, we don't want to have work else. If 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 we get a few vendors, then we need to think about how to activate it and it gets it gets.
I think it's your way, we should have food trucks.
Yes.
We still get right there, right? So that activates.
And have the like turbos and the blues ice cream truck, things like that, that are, people have gone out to dinner in the community, they still want to come by.
Express because I never.
Right? But we need to activate it, right? So so.
I'm saying that way you're getting a little bit of air.
It's wonderful, right? And so we'll, so she's got it. And and she's permanently capable of making these decisions based on the parameters they lay out for you. And this, I mean, this is how we're going to get stuff done. Is it, anybody else got any thoughts?
I think it's great. And I think we need to be brainstorming between now and June that as long as we have proof of concept with vendors, then we need to really have a robust conversation about how we get to this end there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we out of compliance if we're doing like an email? Like, where's Sarah could update us and say, hey, would people be interested in this? Or could someone help you with this with our?
So I would say the good way to do that is like, me can send an email to us, just like Chris does. So here's our agenda and here's everything. You send us a update like, hey, here's what we found out so far. Everybody can kind of look at that. If you individually reach out to her and it's one on one, then we're not in any violation whatsoever. But it's when we, we don't want to have a reply all because then it starts looking like there's a meeting occurring.
She can provide information.
Yes, yes.
I've got questions about that when we get to the.
Or I wonder if.
Yeah. And you can respond to the first one.
So the the one thing that we cut on. Is like making sure that we don't hurt anybody. And so Tommy's and I I don't, um, I'm trying to think of who else, who else it might be adverse to. But making sure that it's it's we, if we do this, we position it in such a way that it's it's accretive for everybody.
I I just think that the best way to, if we're concerned about making sure that there are particular individuals who aren't, you know, rough old or upset with what we're doing, to communicate early and communicate often. So if anybody has a relationship with Tommy, I think it might be worthwhile to just pick up the phone and say hello, this is what we're thinking. Yeah, let that be a data.
They close at six, right?
It's like a five to seven. Well, actually, they may do seven during the weeknights to make that five to seven cloud. And then their weekends are Saturday and Sunday. I think it's six on Saturday, five on Sunday.
Right. Group, again, what, are we looking at the a Friday evening or we're looking at a Saturday for this trial?
Friday evening.
Friday evening.
Okay. You know, you know, likely where this farmer's market may go is is, you know, back to the classic cars, I think I heard. There's a many towns and cities that actually have an old downtown that have had quite successful kind of Friday night out. And I think we got Jamin on the point, which is kind of similar in a way in West Point. You know, this farmer's market could easily turn into having other other local vendors, artisans, and just a way for the community to come out, you know, eat at all the restaurants there in Central Garage and kind of stimulate the economy, doing essentially everything that the EDA stands for.
I actually think that if we sell it more like a family get together Friday evenings, fun night, we probably stand a better chance of not ruffling the feathers of Tom's.
Just, I just did think of a question. Let's say that we reached out across the river to Dragon Run. Are we allowed, are they allowed to be a vendor and sell alcohol because of school property?
We don't want to touch that.
Well, they want to touch that. That's income, that's revenue that would be there. But I I would just wonder because of school property.
I would say, yeah. Yeah, I think you do for the other day.
Okay.
At all times.
Okay, so so how we how we.
All right, one other question.
That's that's probably what.
I'm just asking, that's what I thought. That's why I was just wanted to clarify about the school.
We would put up in five, somewhere around that.
But the Little Lake Park and places like that have the same rules. I think it's pretty standard now.
Chris, we have someone at the waiting room.
So why don't we see where where this goes, right? And and then we'll have something to talk about. And if if we if we, if perch, we ought, I mean, the smartest person I have, I've ever, my mentor told me, pay attention to whether you've got a headwind or tailwind, right? And it's just easier sailing if you got a tailwind. So if we start getting a headwind, then just we don't need any hard rowing.
Well, and we also need to be aware that if there is something that comes up that's critical between now and our next regular, we schedule meeting. We can call a meeting, a special meeting. And it just has to be notified within five days. So we can call a special meeting, it won't be immediate, but we can get that information out and come back in prior to what you insult you.
All right, do we need to have any more discussion on this matter?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we create a survey to send out to local producers or that?
Wonderful.
Just to get, so that, I mean, I can individually reach out to the people who know, which may be 20 or 30 local farmers. But I know that there's other artists in the area. And if we ever try to sting in the county, we could get them reserving us by.
Do we all list those or would bring them all?
I have a list and the people I can specifically reach out. But I mean, if we, if we announce through the through the county, then you would have your local artisans and bakers who could also, that I don't know, that could sign.
So my recommendation there would be that we don't go out and say we're doing, so we're we're a survey. So we, we want to leave a back door.
Tell me what the, tell me what your goal is on the survey. That's what I need for a living. So I can write the survey for you.
So I mean, that's that's as easy as like a link to a Google form, right? On the website. Yeah. County newsletters, things like that.
Well, I will, I will caution you. I mean, it's going to take some time to put this together. You're doing a survey and you're waiting a couple of weeks to get them responding before you decide to do it. I think you do it. I think I think you're having an event and you don't. Because this isn't, this isn't going out to every individual with, that's a resident of the county. This is going out to specific businesses.
He he makes a very good point, Tom.
You can always not have because for whatever reason. But I think you announced that you're going to do it, we're moving forward. You got a time, you got a place.
I think, I think if we can, so we have to have the vendor, we have to have at least one vegetable vendor and I have a company line. And if we can get, I don't know, five to 10 producers commit, then I think that we could say, okay, we can tell the date and then send out the announcement to the county for the other artisans.
This, some things like, sorry, some things like if you had to pay, if there was a fee associated with this, what do you think you'll pay for this? And let them answer it. Oh, I know.
Any other side one?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I mean, if we were to kind of call it the farmer's market and Friday night out, which I think is kind of cool. Um, I I didn't write down the the proposed dates, but instead of like a back to back, maybe having like the third Friday of every month or the first and fourth Friday to at least, I don't want to say if we mess up the first one, but it it gives us a chance to say, hey, we're coming back, you know, this Friday, that next month. Or or if we had it positioned in a way that that people knew that we'd be doing this, rather than a a weekly event.
A month would be a good start.
That's what I thought too. Even more so than just one time, because sometimes the first time is really good or it's really quiet. And really, it probably, if we're anchoring it on a farmer's schedule, it probably is only going to do July, August. Because your fruit and vegetable growers are pretty much done. If we're looking at doing like a set third Friday or fourth Friday, we probably should check King William's football schedule.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're not, you're not going to get it after August.
No.
That parking lot can be filled.
Yeah.
There's always programs with the football.
And even if they're, even if they have an away game, they still park their cars with.
But you got track and other stuff that's running.
Yeah.
So there might be this one over here, the team that run it in King.
I mean, come August, if we're wildly successful, then we have a hard conversation about where does it go, rather than, right? You know.
I was going to say, if it becomes wildly successful, kind of phase two, it would be almost creating a nonprofit potentially. And then a crew that wants to continue to hold the torch or, I mean, if it's wildly successful, there's a much bigger feasibility in how we continue it. But doing that one or that two, I guess, between us giving our time and hopefully the generous support of volunteers throughout the county, I think we could definitely pull it off.
Good. So do we have a motion? Might make a motion so we can give her the keys.
All right. We have somewhat parameters. Yeah. Rob, go.
Second. All right, all in favor? Motion passes. This is a, this was, this was, this was a huge step forward, right? I mean, we just actually like liked it something. We did a thing, you know? It's good. It's really good. Um, all right, regardless of the outcome, I mean, we we got lined up behind one thing and actually figured it out. So let's see. So, um, let's see bylaws. That's the next thing on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, nothing's changed since we talked to him that Saturday. Ms. Branch did a great job. I spent with Red Lion. Any any improvements to the bylaws that you want?
Any, any improvements to the bylaws that you want? I was really primarily focused on identifying the purpose. I didn't think it went far enough for the, for the authority, but then she noticed some other things that needed to be cleaned up. With your will and pleasure as to, as, and the meeting, the meeting time establishing that, you know, tie that down because it does say here every other month.
So, um, I, I just spent a little bit of time thinking about this and I, I mean, is somebody else, I mean, I, um.
I just wanted to hear what we were talking about, the regular meetings that we do, if we did like here and have a work session on every other month. But I didn't have, so we still once a month, for, for one is for RG, OKG. And rest of it is what we just did tonight. So we're not trying and staying here the rest of the system, well, fucking night.
Yeah, um, it'd be nice to, to, to get into more dealing.
That's what I'm saying. Having, so we have, we have a need to go on, on a regular meeting and having a work session, just like the board goes up and try shopping. And I put the two together.
So, and I've got comments. I, I, um, I believe, um, do we want to, do we want to have a work session where we, where we talk about this with brain comments? I, I just, this seems like a slippery slope to get into it.
So I think that to, we should coalesce around kind of the purpose of the bylaws and kind of, if it's in the bylaws, we have to do it, right? We can do more than what's in the bylaws. Right? So when, when meeting schedules and things like that, I think that we should, we should paper up the bare minimum that we're gonna do. And if the chairman wants to call a meeting on the subsequent months, for whatever reason, the chairman wants to call a meeting, then the chairman can call a meeting and we can all come to meet on a monthly basis. I, and I, so I think I, I hesitate to get too far into the weeds and the detail of even, I appreciate wanting to spell out the purpose with more specificity. The challenge with getting too specific, and not just with purpose, but purpose, mission or anything that we would do. The challenge of getting too, too specific is that if we decide that we want to have our monthly meeting at 6:30 rather than seven, then we're going to have to have a meeting to change our bylaws. And so we want to be as broad as we can be while being as specific as we need to be. And so I, I just say that as a word of caution because the more detailed we get in our bylaw document, the more we're bound to, to it and bound to change it if we have to.
And I will say that normally bylaws are, are addressed at the beginning of your, of the calendar year. Is that correct? Even for, for this group, so, uh, I just took the opportunity to kind of spell out the business, the purpose. We don't have to address any of this at this time. So I just thought that, you know, we're kind of in a, a reorganization phase. New staff, new, some new members. I just thought maybe you want to visit. You don't have to.
Well, it's not a bad idea. It's just trying to figure out, I mean, you know, how, how to spend our meeting time. And that's the part that I'm, I just, I'm worried about spending a bunch of time talking about policy, you know, and, and, and less time about actually doing it, implementing. And so, I mean, I, I mean, I've, I mean, I've, I've got comments like, you know, originally it was the, there were really three things we were supposed to do, promote industry, develop trade, inducing manufacturing and, and, and industry, and then the further, further use of agriculture and agricultural products and natural resources. And then in this rewrite, it's, it, you know, the, the one, the, one of the three items is, is an afterthought at the end. It's just, um, and there's, and, and so, I mean, I think we could have some pretty good discussion around the purpose and providing that. But then there's, there's other stuff too, you know, like Jay was talking about regular meetings, electronic participation, you know, deleting what's there and replacing with state, state code. I, I wasn't clear on where the state code stopped. And the subcommittees, there's something that didn't quite right about, about, like, like, like two people as a meeting, but so does that, does that mean that I can't, I mean, I can email somebody, one person about like having a meeting? Or is that a public notice? Or let's see somebody in the grocery store. Can I say, oh, can you make the meeting tomorrow? Or do I need to public, public, public notice? I just, it's just, it just, and, yeah. This can't be right. I mean, I don't know who interpreted it, but.
It's straight out of the state code. That's what it is.
Well, we need, we need a lawyer who could do and interpret us and give us some, give us some breathing.
We're actually going to work with the Board of Supervisors to try to get a training, have FOIA counsel come and do a training. And that would be parliamentary procedure, which would be open to all the board.
Parliamentary procedure or something. I'm particularly focused on it at this meeting. I'm, I'm, and this is a complete segue. So I'm, I do another board. I'm on, I have access to the National Association of Corporate Directors and I will end up working on some, uh, Robert rules regulations. Jerry thinks it's better to make it forward. So, um, I appreciate you. Like, like, like wrapped every now and then, Jay. All right, so.
So. Vote by proxy. Clean that rule. I put my read in that way. Not allowed to vote by proxy. My interpretation of that is we did not cyclically, like anything, and I interpreted that in camp.
I believe that you too. Any vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
He said he's not a proxy vote though by electronic means.
Right.
Because we have agreed to allow him to attend this meeting via electronic means. Proxy means that I have someone standing in my place and vote for me.
Right. Okay. So I, I just, I, I, my words, you just answered. I should, they can't have someone stand in for you.
Right.
I'm with you. But we ought to be able to find an attorney to give us some breathing.
Well, if they didn't like people talking about dealing with the board six times, they had to say, have to ruin it and bring in all the board.
So, so why don't, my, my recommendation is that we table the bylaws and, uh,
So the one thing that I would recommend that we do add in is the electronic ability for members to attend because that's updated based off of COVID and what the state code currently says about how we're able to bring people in via electronic means.
If the state code overrides your bylaws, so if you violate it, you, you can't make a bylaw that goes in direct contradiction with state code. So for that, you know, whether it's in your bylaws or not, it's still allowable because it's the state code.
But at the same time, if we cite specific state code and that state code is no longer right, enacted, our bylaws are still, you know, so.
You're still bound by the code.
You're still bound by the code, but we still have to go back and clean it up every time.
Yeah, and that's all this was, was changing it since they did change.
Except the sections where we're citing state code. I mean, if, as long as the, the language mirrors state code, that's.
So what do you want, want to do? Just, I'm focused on trying to get stuff done and, but at the same time, like Jay.
I would think that, I mean, I, I do think and I appreciate what Mr. Ashcraft has done, and I think some conversation focused around the purpose and the mission. I know that we're, we're, maybe it's not tonight, given the time, but he's offered, I think, a, a robust and compelling vision for what we ought to be up to. And so having, digging into that a little bit, I think is, is, is well worth the time. Um, and then I mean, some of the other changes that need to be made in here are just perfunctory, I think, more than anything else. So, I mean, I, I do think we should set aside, you know, 15 minutes to go to talk about it, the purpose specifically, maybe at the next meeting and then kind of figure out where we want to go.
So we bring comments, we, we all bring our comments to the next meeting and we, and we spend 15 minutes reviewing it, discussing it, trying to make a decision, move on. Okay, you, Tim, why don't you turn that into a motion?
I move.
You're fast on that one.
I moved for that. So moved.
Can't so move it. So what is, what is the motion? Are we, are we tabling everything?
Yeah. I mean, I don't necessarily think we need a motion. I think we should, the chairman can just table this until the next meeting.
I don't think we have, if we're tabling the entire look at bylaws, then you can table it until the next, I don't think we need to, to have a motion simply to table.
The chairman can request that his colleagues come to the next meeting, prepare to have 15 minute discussion about the purpose.
So everybody come prepared.
Here's a question though. Are we having an official meeting next time or are we going to have a work session?
That's, you can, you can vote at work sessions if needed. Yes.
Is, is next month in the bylaws a, a, a meeting? No, well, the chairman can just call a meeting.
So I, I, um, I liked when we were sitting at the table, around the table, looking at each other, right? As opposed to half of the room, you know, the time and I, I, I.
I like being further away from the camera.
I like, I love you. I love you. When you sit on the end, you get to help you.
So, so anyway, I don't know whether that, that gets traction with anybody else, but I, I mean, I.
I think it makes things more tangible.
Just, I've never done business at a BS. I just, that's, this is a person, so.
It would be one thing if we had throngs of adoring fans, but since, since the public is absent, it would be nice.
So, so can you all help us with that next round?
Yeah, the other thing we have to work out is the sound because when you talk into the microphone, that's where we're recording the meeting.
Well, she rhymes with me all the time, but I talk about it.
We don't, if we're not capable of doing that down here, then I, I might have to tell you we can't do it.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, because sometimes.
We're pretty good at following her.
Yeah, you know, sometimes, uh, I'm not saying the meeting is a significant, when you have a regular meeting, that's important. When you have a work session like we did that Saturday, you know, not every word has to be, you know, caught.
So that was in response to her question about what we're doing next weekend, or next month. Yeah, so.
But we could look to.
Can we turn it into, into a work session?
So it would be a work session. It's a special called meeting because it is not a regular meeting that's on your calendar.
Excited about that. Are you good with that? I mean, it's a, it actually gets on the calendar. So 15 minutes on the bylaws and everybody needs to bring.
Mr. Chairman, I, dude, I don't mean to interrupt you, but in January, the EDA set a calendar
Yeah.
For the year.
Yeah.
Okay, so you look, my, that calendar calls for you to have a, a meeting every month.
All right.
Now, whether you call it a work session or a regular meeting is really in the theory.
Okay.
You got the date, you got the time.
Except for bylaws also align to that calendar, which call regular meetings in the bylaws by monthly. So those are identified.
Well, technically by setting the calendar, you already amended your bylaw. You just didn't, you just didn't do it officially. Because you're having a meeting every month. You, you voted to have a meeting every month.
Right, but the Board of Supervisors does the same thing, but has regulars, different meetings, which are part of their.
So we're just trying to figure out whether it's, whether, whether we're having this kind of a meeting or that kind of a meeting.
I think the.
You could just, you can.
I think it's already been set. It's not personally the same.
Yeah, you, you're having a meeting every month. What you want to call it is now up to, up to you. So I, I would like, I, I'd like to get some work done next time with me. And I propose that we have what we're calling a work session. And one of the items on the agenda would be 15 minutes on the bylaw and everybody bring what you got to say, your contributions. Yep. Kyle's health report, right? So we need to, Chris, what is a reasonable date for you to get stuff back to Kyle? If we have comments, we still read this report and email you comments, questions, clarifications.
That's meeting is June 8th, which means the packet goes up on the first of June. So if you want to give him a week to look at things, you would need to get your comments to me by the May 20th, Friday, May 20th.
So we're for everybody.
So how are the comments being submitted or, so I understood, but format wise, are we making comments and scribbled in the margins on a document?
Exactly. No, it's got, it, it needs to be in an email and, and to send it to her because she needs to be able to.
But I understand.
Understood, but. You can call me and I'll, and I'll, I'll do, right, hook them up. So just call me.
Your bylaws. All right, on the bylaws, can we have a cocktail or email?
It's in, it's in the package.
It is? Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could send you another bottle.
Well, if it's in my package.
Yeah, it's in your package.
Okay.
So I, I think we just said the door opened to, 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 just call in first with comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so there it is. That's even easier. First you go with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that you, uh, that you move out of a, a, to a future, to a future meeting. It's just a concept to, to, to talk about what we'd like to engage other business people in a, in a separate, uh, venue.
That's a great idea.
I've seen it work successfully.
It's a great idea.
I just thought it was worth breaking the order. It's less formal than, than, uh, meeting every month, but let's not talk about it tonight.
It's a great idea.
You got, you got plenty of time to, to work.
Okay, so, so we got two things on the agenda. Is there anything else we wanted to deal with in our, in our work session?
I would think we want an update on the farmer's market as well, but that doesn't have to be a long.
Okay. Anything else? Any other great ideas? Those are the three things. So we've done, so it's a public comment period. Let's, let's make that some.
Real quick, what about the additional agenda item I had?
Oh, golly, thank you so much. I wrote this down. Um, yes, please, bring it on.
All right, thank you.
On the, on the, the property.
Yeah, so when we, when we had our meeting on Saturday, or that Saturday, we discussed having some sort of database of the commercial properties that we can go out and advertise so that, you know, we're kind of fishing with bait on the end of the hook to outside investors. I did reach out to Kyle at RKG and I wanted, so actually, first off, I reached out to a real estate websites that, you know, would basically provide a site for a hometown realty or something like that. And what came back was that all of these people, these web developers, they all pull from, I think it's the IDX it's called, basically the multiple listing service that's populating their, their website. And since we have so many, call it pocket listings or on MLS or LoopNet listings, we'd have to then put them in manually, um, which none of those sites for like a hometown realty will do. So I reached out to Kyle at RKG. He thought it was a fantastic idea to have all these sites, whether they're for sale by owner on LoopNet or through any marketing avenue. But he also thought that kind of phase two of his thing would be from a marketing standpoint, an identity to the King William EDA is for us to have our own separate site that would kind of talk about the great things of the county, what we have to offer from a business standpoint. And then that's also where we would display our properties. Um, now we could do a couple of things to get to that point. We could far, use our current web provider with the county. We can do a GoDaddy site, a Wix site, or contract with somebody to build us a very simple site and upload. But he thought it was a fantastic idea because if there's someone from Dallas or San Francisco looking to put a site in the Richmond area, you know, with the right search engine optimization, we can come up and, uh, they'd hopefully pick King William County if, if their business suited our area. So I guess what I'm asking is, I think that it would be a good idea for us to have our own separate EDA website that we can brand and have our own identity. As for who's going to keep it up, I know I talked to Mr. Ashcroft and it could be a group effort, potentially some interns over the summer can keep it updated if properties sell or properties come on the market. Can keep it updated if properties sell or properties come on the market.
So Kenny.
And that's how.
I, I, I thank you for chasing this down, it sounds like you, you moved the ball for us. I, I think that this is one of those idea, one of those ideas that we, we could use Jade's matrix on, right? And go through the pros and the cons and figure out where it lands relative to everything else and. One way to, one way to advance that quickly would be to, to brainstorm yourself on, on pros and cons and, and articulate. Some, you know, some of what you just said in a way that, that, you know, gets it, gets on the board. First thing about how, how you actually move it forward, right, stuff within my. I'm working with other, other thoughts.
I talked with the real estate agent yesterday because I had one that's good, and I have. They have like three blocks of land that's set with up through development. That's worrying, so I don't know if that's something that we can help with, you know.
It kind of fits into what Ken's.
Well, I thought it was, you know, while I was talking about that, and you know. They've been getting about a year, two years now, and then you had a. Fight, so I don't know, don't know about these properties up until last, it's a surprise.
Yeah, I mean, my, my recommendation, move the needle or move the ball forward would be to. You know, we get some quotes from our current website provider. Or I can search some out to see what it would be on a monthly and an annual basis and then the actual build out. And then as far as us getting the listings and uploading it, it would be myself and any other volunteers just working with the local real estate firms. And then just calling the numbers, you know, basically on the signs out in the highway. But I, I do think that, you know, this could be an easy win that we can say that we did complete in this year. You know, I, I forget if it was Mr. Ron Eder that said it, but when Tractor Supply came. You know, Mechanicsville takes the zip codes and phone numbers and everything. So when Tractor Supply knew that they wanted to come to this area, they, they had the data, they were going to come. Whether it was on three sixty or thirty, they knew they were going to come, so they didn't need handouts, incentives, all that stuff. And that's where I think it could be really powerful by us putting out the properties for sale and kind of from a marketing standpoint.
I'm, I'm not sure that I see the nexus between the Tractor Supply having zip codes and identifying they wanted to be here. I guess, I guess in that, in that the property was available, maybe.
Yeah, so I guess what I, what I meant by that was, I, I forget if it was Ray, the manager, but they, whenever you're in Tractor Supply, they take your phone number and your information. And they basically saw that a lot of King William was going to Mechanicsville, so they saw the need to be in King William. So they, they didn't come looking for handouts, tax breaks, all the above, they knew that they wanted to be here. It was just a matter of them finding a piece of property and getting it zoned. So if we can find another company, more companies like that, that don't need. Benefits, they need to come here because of a reason, a business, there's a business reason for them to come. By us finding these properties, it would make it easier for their decision.
Yeah, so, Kenny and I, I'll be glad to work with you, but I think that the, the, the first step before, before we go spending time. On, on this and potentially for money is to just make sure that every, you're bringing everybody along with you. Right, and so the whole board is behind it as opposed to just, because if, if we all, if we all have our own individual initiatives, we're, it just, we're not going to cover as much ground as, as quickly, so. Between now and the next meeting, I'd be glad to sit, when you come to my house and, or you can't come to my house. See, I don't, I don't, this is so frustrating.
Oh, yeah, no, this, this, I, I just was bringing forward an idea, I wasn't looking for any. Sort of a motion or anything, just looking for some feedback from the group. Just to kind of present my preliminary findings.
I think it's a good idea because if like people, so if there were a property, I didn't know that it was up to say. And if we have information that these properties are here and accounted for sales for, at all the poses, if something's up, we know it might fit here, it might fit there. And right now, we have no idea where it's anything.
I think this, it would be a vehicle to address one of the critical weaknesses that we have, that, you know. Our consultant has identified for us, I think, I don't know that we have enough information to assess whether or not, you know. And of course, there's the cost, there's the maintenance, there's the upkeep, there's all those things that we have to consider before we can say, yes, let's have a website. I mean, I would, I would just recommend that Kenny keep, keep looking into it and try to, you know, build out some more information that we can actually. You know, consider and take action on.
I, I think that's the way it's, it's going to have to be, because we can't work together, and so, so you, you will have to chase it, Kenny, and then. The, when, whenever we have our meeting where we're going to start drilling into, into these various opportunities. We'll get that on the board and we'll drill into it and look at the, at the pros and cons and, and have at it and rip it apart, you know, and. If it stands the test, then, you know, we're all behind you.
Sounds good.
Can, can, can you please try to get a, find an opinion, some way that we can actually work together? I don't know how we do this. If it, we can't like call each other and have discussions, and it's just the most frustrating thing we want.
Again, I think that Grant is saying, when we get into that training, that we'll ask all those questions, and I guess they'll give us direction.
But I mean, you see the dilemma, I mean, like, I'm just, I've, I've, I've told Charlie, I said, call me, I'll work through it, right, and I can do that, and you got Kenny.
You can do that, you just can't have a subcommittee, you can't form a committee or a work group or something like that and then have a meeting. You can.
You can email, you can talk.
Yeah, you can email, you can call.
You can't have a conference call.
And the subcommittee has to be appointed by the, by the, only by the, by the.
Unlegal?
Yeah, like, if, if Miss Williams and, and Mr. Hodges want to talk about the survey they're going to put together, that, that's perfectly legal.
But the long time you came and to make the committee.
Yeah, if you appointed a committee, then we'd have to let the public know that those two are talking about.
But they have individual, what's that?
Right, that's right. Comment, and comment.
Or the state code says no more than two, right?
Not for subcommittee.
Well, two, right, no more than two, though.
I know.
The forum supper, I'm, I'm.
So let's, 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 let's table this, I'm, I'm going to be frustrated talking about what we can't do. It's just the speed of government, you know? So. Um, okay.
With due respect to government people.
They're, they're helping, I mean, they're actually like, we're, yeah, they're the only reason we're getting anything done. But it's, yeah. So let's see, so we got a public comment period, do we have anybody who needs to, wants to talk? Once, twice. Okay, next meeting is June eighth. We, do we need to convene a closed meeting? That's on the agenda, that's item number eleven.
Or you can defer the appointment discussion for another, for another meeting if you want, you don't have to talk about it tonight.
I think we at least need to address it. So that we have one going forward, just like I told Percy tonight, mine ends June, so in actuality, we're, we're going to have another discussion in June. Because this seat is up again at that point. So we defer to June, we'll have two to talk about instead of just one, right now, we have one vacant.
Is there urgency around this?
No, I think, obviously, you make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and they, they have to ratify it, so as long as the Board of Supervisors makes a decision about the, by the. By the meeting that's due, which is the point. Perfect, point that, whatever. That would, that would make everybody ready for July one.
Do you need to, before we get, need to read for him, did he, did he finish in June or?
Yeah, mine is June twenty third.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, if you're ready to make that, if you're ready to make that recommendation tonight, you can do it tonight, you don't have to go to the election to do that.
And I was, what I was suggesting is that we just push the whole thing.
And just keep in mind that, that means that until. And so the July meeting, I will not be up.
No, if we meet on June eighth.
June eighth, the board would have to put the package out, it has to go to Chris, and I have to be sworn back in before I can come back to the meeting. I'm just looking at all the logistical pieces.
The June are gone.
July, okay, so the July meeting is.
Well, there's a June, there's a June meeting of this board, in the EDA.
Right, June eight.
They make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for the last meeting of June, and the board approves that recommendation. Then you would be eligible for your term again.
So we're good, so we're good, there's no problem, okay, so.
The only problem is that we have the work session. So how much business do we want to do? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Well, his term doesn't expire until after the work session. So we can do the work.
Right.
And then.
You just need to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for its consideration at its, at its June twenty seventh meeting or whatever it is.
So, well, that does bring up, here's my final question, from a work session, can we legally go into closed session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Board of Supervisors votes all the time.
Okay.
And they vote all the time.
I know some of them personally, but. I, I just knew some of them personally.
Get that in the chat, get that in the chat.
So you guys, you guys okay with that?
Oh, no, that's old.
Okay.
But if we're not going into closed session, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm surprised Jake didn't. Oh, are you tired?